Jason and Patrick. To get to get those meetings scheduled and get that information to them, um, so they're able to finalize that report. And what I think that report will really help with is it's a it's a cohesive document that. Kind of goes through the various areas of each school and what the deficiencies are, and they prioritize them based on. How bad the deficiency is. So some areas, you know, have a priority of one, whereas other areas have like a priority of five. Um, so once we get a final draft of that report, obviously we'll send it out to the committee and we'll review it. Um, I will want to get that report to G W W O as well, because it provides a good um, understanding. And kind of breakdown of what each of the schools are, um, their layout, the systems that they have, the age of some of the systems. Um, and that'll kind of help them as they um, go towards um, doing the conceptual design.
Sam, what's the time? Sorry. What's what's the timeline?
So I'm, they said by end of February, they could have it done. I'm hoping sooner, but I I'm aiming for end of February.
Would all of that information have been, because I was at those meetings, I remember when. Uh, the consultant from SLAM was there and. He was there when we had a meeting in here, I believe. They said that they were going to be, all they needed to do is they could finish up that between now, then and. So what I guess, what's holding it up?
Um, there's a holdup with, uh, we were, we really weren't sure what we were gonna do, A. Um, B, there was some, um.
We weren't sure what we were gonna do. What are you talking about?
We weren't sure what we were gonna do in terms of. Like if we were gonna go down the route of looking at renovate to new, new construction, like what we were gonna do with the schools, or if we were still gonna go down the route of. HVAC. So we were still kind of in the in between, trying to decide. So I think that's where like the big question mark was. So um, now that we kind of have somewhat of a path of where we're going, we can kind, we can say, okay, let's finalize the report. Move on from this and then continue with the rest of of the plans.
The conceptual designs get started before this is done, though?
Yeah, I I believe so.
So we're not gonna have to wait until February to do anything with your.
No, I don't think so. And I'll get into that a little bit too, um, because for the, we need to finalize the ed specs too before. We can kind of get um, a conceptual design, you know, finalized. We can potentially start some things. But the ed specs are really what's gonna guide the conceptual design. So, and I'll get into that in a minute too. Any other questions on that?
Is there any reason why you say there's just a few pieces that are not quite finalized yet? Is there any reason why we can't get a draft?
Um, I can send you the draft. Um, the areas that are open are are highlighted. So I can send you the draft. That's not a problem. Any other questions on that one? Um, so number two, uh, educational specification. So we have been working. On the ed specs, um, and getting those drafted. And for those of you who aren't familiar with the ed specs, it's basically like a guidebook. Um, stating what the programming needs are for each school, what the space requirements would be. Um, it gets kind of, it gets granular to the point of like, okay, you need one teacher desk, you need X number of student desks, that type of thing. Um, and that helps guide the square footage and the size of each school. Um, so right now we're working on ed specs for both. The combined middle high school as well as the elementary school. We have initial drafts of both of them. Um, we've already done a a pretty comprehensive review of the middle high school one. I'm supposed to have comments from Patrick by the end of this week on the Broadbrook one. Oh, you already have them? Okay.
Copy to that too, drafted it.
Um.
When were they sent?
Um, as far as the comments.
Yeah.
Today. I always send them to Samantha and Fran.
Okay. I'll add Jason to that too, so he can take a look.
Take into account like the amount of parking spots too?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. And we'll kind of work through that, um, through the conceptual design. Um, because based on like the capacity of the school, that'll obviously influence the the number of parking spots and parking lots and things like that. Um, that all is not gonna be like finalized or like the conceptual is not. And is just that, it's a concept. It's not the final end all be all. So there is gonna be obviously multiple iterations. You know, if we are to get past the the referendum, there's gonna be multiple phases of drawing. So I don't want anyone to think that. Just because we do this concept design, that that's it. And because that's definitely not the case. Um, so.
What's your timeline on having those done completely?
So.
As I, I, again, I recall we had a meeting at the. Um, elementary school was just before Christmas and some of them wanted to be done before Christmas break. So I just.
So we, so we had the draft, um, uh, the goal was to have the first draft of the middle school, high school before Christmas. Um, and then, uh, our ed spec writer kind of worked through the holidays and got a draft of the Broadbrook Elementary School ones out. So now, uh, tomorrow, we actually have a a call with myself, Patrick, Jason, Joe. To go over the middle school, high school ones, because we kind of need to work through the space. And kind of align that with what the state of Connecticut space requirements are. Um, right now, the way that they're written out, it's significantly over. So we kind of need to figure out what we need to do to get it a little bit more in alignment with what the state allows. And I'll get into that more towards the end. Of this presentation. Um, so my goal is to have them completed. I believe I put the end of. March, like beginning of April into the schedule. Um. However, I I I understand that it's a critical document and we need to make sure that we get it right. So I also don't wanna. Just rush through it to get it done type of thing.
I think that that needs to go to the Board of Ed.
I was gonna ask who had final approval over.
So, uh, per the grant application requirements, the Board of Ed ultimately has to approve the ed specs. Um, and then I need a certified copy of those minutes to submit with the grant application. So at the end of the day, it's it's really the Board of Ed that approves the ed specs. Um, with that said, um, typically how how we go about this is we work. Kind of with the the school administration staff to kind of get those ed specs completed, because those are typically the people that. Know what spaces they need and the programming and stuff. Um, I I'm hesitant to send you guys a draft, because then I don't wanna have like twenty different people giving me comments on it. Because that'll get kind of crazy and it's gonna be kind of, it's gonna, it gets hard to manage.
Yeah, in fairness too, like I mean, initial draft. It's my first experience, but I mean, there's a lot. On the front end, um, like perfect example, like I'll give an example from, uh, like the elementary, like. Uh, cafeteria on the current one says it's hundred, uh, for three waves. Well, that would be based on three hundred kids. We have five hundred kids.
Right.
So gotta figure that out. So before you get that, want to get it.
Yep.
Um, you know, uh, the document says Broadbrook slash high school. Obviously, it's a Broadbrook school, you know, little edits.
Absolutely.
Stuff like that cleaned up, so that you have a more finalized version. Um, and straight lines, uh, top.
Okay, then as far as timeline goes though, if it ends up being, say, early April, we have to look at that early April meeting for us to review it. And then maybe the next meeting for us to approve it, we'll have to digest.
Cause there's comments and then they could put it down to May.
So I'm just thinking about your deadline with the application being June.
Mm-hmm.
And then if there's any changes that have to be changed to the um, plans, I just wanna make sure like we're, you know, timeline wise. Let's take.
Yeah, and I think, I think what we could do too is we can maybe even get the board involved a little bit earlier. And have kind of like a preliminary meeting. So once we get these current drafts a little bit more finalized and cleaned up. There's not an issue kind of going to the board and saying, hey, let's look at these, let's get your comments and let's start incorporating those now. Um, even if it's not the finalized version, um, because. The the tricky part of this too, especially with the grant application is. When you have minutes that are approving stuff, I need the certified minutes. So whether that be the town clerk stamps them and certifies them, or I need. The minutes of the subsequent meeting approving those minutes. Does that make sense? I don't know why the state does it that way, but that's just what they ask. So. I always try to plan for that and I have a schedule at the end of the presentation and you'll see I have. Every single Board of Ed, Board of Selectment, ad hoc facility, I have all the dates kind of. Just marked out so we can see all together, like, okay, where are all these meetings? Where could we squeeze them in? Um, or, you know, find areas where we need to get approvals. Does that make sense? Is that helpful? Okay. Um. Does anyone have any other questions on the ed specs and what those entail?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Should be available beginning of April, both the high school, middle school and Broadbrook School.
That's what my goal is. Um, and I I wanna try to get them sooner than that, if possible. Um, like I said, we all, I think the most important thing is we all kind of need to just come together and be able to just like. Cohesively make decisions, because that's ultimately what drives a lot of these deadlines is the ability of. Like you guys and everyone on the town side too, to be able to make decisions quickly. Um, and I know it it may seem a little bit. It's a little bit rushed or a little bit kind of disjointed right now, because no one's ever been through this before a- on your side. So. Um, my goal is to kind of walk you through this as much as possible. Be as clear with you guys as to what we need and and kind of guide you in making some of those decisions, because ultimately that's gonna, that's gonna be what drives the schedule is being able to make decisions.
I'm thinking if. Has the review. Just constantly.
Yeah, I think just knowing that with your timeline. Mm-hmm.
I I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for you or for Patrick, um, but are there? I I know that we're limited in the amount of space that the state wants us to have, but are are. Is there like a a range of square feet per child that they look for?
Yeah, do you want me to pull up the spreadsheet?
Did I miss this?
No, 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 no. I I just have it.
Part of the very initial report that they gave of like the five scenarios they started with, I remember that.
I'll pull up the spreadsheet that that is used, just to show you how it.
But I mean, if there's like a, if there's a range, if there's a minimum and a maximum, um.
Yeah.
And then we know how many square feet we have now. We know, we know that there's gonna have to be like kind of a rejiggering of that in order to get closer to what the state requirements are.
Yep.
I just was wondering what you're, what that looks like.
So. It varies per grade level. I don't know. Can everyone see this? I know it's a little small.
Okay.
Um. So this is a a document that the state uses and this helps, uh, basically calculate what. You know, the spaces required for students based on grade level and then based on. Essentially total enrollment. So if you look at this. Anywhere from zero to three hundred and fifty students, this is the allowable square footage per student based on grade. And you'll see as you get higher in the grade levels, there's more square footage that's required, right?
I would have thought that was going the other way.
And so did I, but.
They're bigger.
Yeah, but my little ones don't stay put anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't, I I'm not sure. Again, this is something that the state created, so I'm not, I don't know fully what their rationale is behind this.
Anyone.
Um, so this way, the way this works, for example, like you, let's just do the middle high school as. As an example.
I wouldn't recommend that it's.
So you basically, you select what grade levels there are. So we're gonna have. Let's say, I believe it's like five to twelve, right, in the middle high school. So you select all those grade levels. Um, you go down here and you input the highest projected eight-year enrollment, right? Um, I believe it was, I don't remember. Let's just say it's like three hundred, right? So you type that in.
Eight, no, it's more than that.
For six, for fifth to ten, how much? Do you guys know the number?
Five hundred. Call five hundred.
Five hundred, okay. Sorry.
So, yeah.
So what it does is it calculates based on how many total square foot, what the total square footage is required. So based on state standards, and again, these are just rough, but based on state standards, it's eighty-seven, six twenty-five.
Yeah.
But does it? And is there a spot in there that says what we have, so that we know?
Uh, I.
The difference between.
No, you typically don't unless it's.
So there's no like, um, like Heather was, um, was asking, like, do you get additional square footage? For special ed? So one of the feedback we have is the amount of space our special. Space, um, is essentially obviously, um, working against us. However, if you look at our. Um, per pupil, uh, district expense for special ed, we have one of the lowest in the state. Um, so it's something to, uh, consider, you know.
So the state does give space waivers. Um, for projects for various reasons. With that said, the current way that the ed specs are, we're pretty much, we're a little over more than double what you're allowed. With the current ed specs.
Are you familiar with, um, what's the largest space waiver the state has has granted? And what's the average state waiver of the spaces? The the.
I don't know off the top of my head, unfortunately. It 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 varies amongst district to district. Um, so I. And it's all for varying reasons, and it also depends on what your representatives and what the local officials are are pushing for, right? So sometimes you get, you know, districts where. The local representatives that work at in Hartford are very cooperative and they they wanna work with you and they wanna get you whatever they can get you. And then you have some that maybe aren't like that. So. Um, I I'm not sure, and I I think the case here is probably the former rather than the latter, but, um.
But there's limits to.
But there's limits to what you can ask for for the state, right?
Um. I apologize. If we can go back. That just makes a rolling average there for the high school. And this is fifth through eighth, and as I thought that the, um. The kids who are involved in that, you know, that the higher the grade, the bigger the number.
Mm-hmm.
And so the average is, that is skewed, because if it's average across kindergarten through.
Yeah, five hundred divided into.
You know, that four, that's, you know, that's pre K through twelve. That's not, that's cutting us short.
Well, no, because pre K through twelve, it doesn't, it, these numbers are all zero. So it's pulling from this column right here. So it's really only pulling adding fifth through twelfth.
But how does it know the difference between a fifth grader in that five hundred that you're putting in for the total population there?
Well, five hundred is not a real number. That's just illustrative. That's just a guess.
So it just dispersed it like.
Senior than you do for a grader. How does that be?
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't, I don't think it accounts for that. Again, I didn't create this, the state did, so I don't know if that.
That's a state, they made that spreadsheet?
This, yeah, this comes from the state. Yeah. 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 If I created it, I could tell you exactly where all the numbers come from and how they got to them, but I I'm not privy to that. Um, and to try to dig that up is.
Forget it.
An effort and it's of itself.
So Sam, do do we show what currently we have, what's sped? Square footage now.
Um.
Would that be?
Yeah, and for the ed specs are what's currently like, what you're utilizing as of this moment. Um, I I think we have the numbers. I just don't have them off the top of my head, but I can get that. Yeah. Yeah.
We'll be able to see what we, that we're using. Right now, current.
A special ed first grader takes a lot more room, I would think than a, a, you know.
I'm just talking about the high school. How much space is the special ed taking?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we could get the measurements, like we know the rooms, we'd have to get.
Yeah, I think if we had that and then we can.
And is it adequate space now?
Right.
At the high school?
Yes.
Um, yes, that's the most, I think. So. What you use at the middle school added, if you took.
Yeah.
We'll just say you had a hundred square feet at the middle school, you move it to the high school, you have five hundred square feet. Six hundred square feet for special ed would be, that would be a good number to. Actually, let me take that back on, um, on, uh, what's in the ed specs is. Middle school is a little different, because.
Right.
The rooms are being occupied. Some of the rooms, you don't need that size, and then some rooms are undersized. So.
Right.
So we talked about space, it actually may be essentially a wash, it's just the structure of the space.
Well, right, so.
And then high school, the size would be a problem. That would, that would be a good, if if this is where we're gonna. And I'll say it in Joe language, hang our hat that, you know, we do not want this space to reduce, so it should not be included. In what we're trying to do, we should really need to, we really need to know that number.
Yeah.
You know, that would be a helpful number for us to have going forward down the road.
But that's not something that's included in the ed specs? I thought that was the point of the ed specs.
You don't really put what you currently have, you put what you need.
Oh.
Yes.
I thought that was.
And to be quite honest, the state. The state doesn't go necessarily by the ed specs, like they'll look at them, but they don't review them line by line, because they have so many of these that they review. So the ed specs need to be whatever you guys need, and we need to focus on getting those in alignment with the space, with the space standards, but. They're more concerned about that you guys have the ed specs and they're approved and you guys have a plan, more so than what the the actual content is. Now, if you're going to special legislation and you're asking for a space waiver, because you have X amount of square feet of special ed, as an example. Then you could say, well, it's in the ed specs that we built in this amount of square footage for for that. Does that, does that make sense to everybody? Um, again, it it's the state, so I'm I'm only at the the mercy, unfortunately. Um.
Look, the governor's budget came out today, and one of the things that he's, uh, it, based on the two articles I've read, there there are changing the way they look at special education and encouraging. Districts to localize special education versus outputting it. There's gonna be a bunch of bills that'll be introduced with what that looks like, right?
I think there's about forty just on special education.
Right.
Not, not just on space, but on the topic, because some sex is cost, some space, I mean, it's all brain setting.
Um, the governor's bills though are the ones to really pay attention to, and they they will be introduced probably starting tomorrow. Um, so I I just think that that's. It's important that we start focusing on on that conversation, but also that that our argument shouldn't be lost, that there's, this is a newfound focus with the state.
Mm-hmm. No, that's a, that's a great point. Um.
Yes. I just sort of thought with what's going on at the top, top of the house in America, um. If any of the actions that are happening in the dis- this, or the dissolution of the Department of Education. Is that gonna, if that happens in some fashion, how is that gonna?
That's a great question. Um.
It'd be more on your operational side, uh, for any Title One funding that you get.
Yeah.
Um. Things like school constructions almost exclusively state paid for, now that the. Kind of secondary impact there would be if the state has to make up for, uh, programmatic offerings and short something else.
Yes.
They may lay off on the bonding side, um, to to free up the operating capital.
Yeah.
That would be an indirect result of of Washington.
But again, something we need to keep this point, just.
Yeah, and that's, so I I was on the phone with the, with Commissioner Hober from agriculture when when this started. And he's saying, all I want is to get out of the session without having draconian cuts hit because of what's going on in Washington.
Yeah.
And that's the prevailing attitude right now is like, we just don't know what's happening.
Yeah.
Um, so until there, there's a little bit of daylight, um, they're gonna be operating in that, in that space.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I just wanna add one more thing with why, um, I'm kind of. Emphasizing the point of the space standards in the, in the space. So I think what's important to note is you're. Every town and district throughout the state is assigned a reimbursement rate for these school projects. Um, so if for some reason, and if you don't get a space waiver and your school doesn't meet the space requirements. You guys take a hit on your reimbursement rate. So the state will lower your reimbursement rate by a certain percentage. So that's why it's super important. That's why I'm kind of. Drive, trying to drive this home, because I want the town to get as much reimbursement as we possibly can. Um, so we just need, that's another reason why we need to make sure that the space kind of aligns with each other, um, because it directly has a financial impact.
But if it doesn't. We're not limited to doing that space. If we feel that we need more space, maybe there could be a little bit of growth or. Special ed, we need a little bit more space there. Yes, we're trying to get the most amount of money back. We're also investing in the town. So if we kind of suck up. Whatever we think we need to suck up a little bit, try to propose to the town or that as well.
We can.
To a, to a point, and that's if there's a finite amount of space on the credit card.
You only have a certain, every town had only, and Jason, you can probably speak to this a little bit better, but every town has like a debt service and and a bonding capacity. So you need to understand what those limitations are, and you can probably only bond for a certain amount. Right?
Figured out the bond yet, then?
Haven't looked to know it, uh, in a, in a definitive way. We're not there yet, John.
It's hard to look into.
I will tell you, here's how you do it, though.
Estimate, yeah.
You you take whatever your reimbursement rate is going to be. First of all, your debt service can only be ten percent of your operating budget. So what's our operating budget gonna be next year? We don't know yet. Um, we know about what it's gonna be, but we don't, that's all just starting.
Is that the local budget?
It's the.
Is that highest revenue or set up before?
It's our operating budget.
So what is that at this currently?
Forty-five point six.
Okay. Ten percent of that?
What's that?
Ten percent of that?
Our part two, right?
It's the total, it's the town's operating budget. Yeah, it's it's what our municipal budget is. Then you you take that number, you can only have debt service of, uh, ten percent of that number. Then you have to take that and you have to divide that by the reimbursement rate that we don't know yet. Um, and then figure out what your debt payments are going to be based on that. So our, our. Our debt capacity is gonna be somewhere around, um, our our bonding capacity, if there, if we had. You know, South Windsor or Farmington's grand list, um, then our debt capacity would be somewhere around a quarter of a billion dollars. Um, we cannot get to that, because our municipal budget is not big enough to carry that ten percent for debt service. So that means you have to scale that back. Basically, you're backing into how much your credit card payment could be. Um, and that's gonna be more finite.
Um, is this also that the four and a half million? Uh, does that, um, include what's currently outstanding as well? Or is it?
Yes.
Talking about. Okay.
Yes, that's the bad news. Um, the good news is we don't have very much. Um, we've got the North Road Store, part, uh, part two of the North Road Store is outstanding and the modulars are outstanding, and that's it. Um, when I put my budget message out in March, I do a pretty, well, not a comprehensive, if anybody ever reads it, which I don't think they do.
I do.
Um, there, there's like a page that's dedicated to the town's debt positions, um, and our pension costs and. Although I don't think anybody but Fran reads it, um, there is some really interesting information in there, um, and that is. Kind of what's driving the price tag that we're able to borrow for. So if this, if we, you know, our standard reimbursement rate for reconstruction costs is sixty-three percent. And we come back and say, well, all right, we're gonna settle for a forty-eight percent reimbursement rate. That will scale back the amount that we are able to borrow against our debt capacity. So there's a, you know, it's a trade off. It's a rule of diminishing returns pretty quickly.
Play these numbers for the.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's probably, that's later on. We need to get a conceptual design done, so we can get a cost estimate, and then that estimate will say, okay. It'll include everything from hard construction costs to soft costs. Um, to consultant fees, furniture, technology, contingencies, everything. And then that's when we'll say, okay, this is what we're thinking this school is gonna cost. Jason, what, is that something that's within your capacity, or where do you think we need to maybe cut back a little bit? And then those costs, once we finalize those numbers, that will drive what the referendum amount is that we asked for in September.
I don't, it doesn't sound like we have a lot of time to do all that stuff. Like we're running the hundred meter dash when we should be. Yeah. I'm doing instead of pace. I don't know how to like describe how I'm feeling now, but. Um. Like, if we have to wait until the beginning of April before we're even able to finally see if we have the ed specs, and then it comes to show. Oh, this, we do not have enough space to combine our two schools to be able to have it work for our community of kids. Then where are we at? Like, I I truly feel like we're rushing. And I want what's best for the kids. I want them to have new schools. Just needed to kind of put that on the table.
Please hold the camera. Please hold the camera, I'll get it.
Keep talking.
Keep saying. I have no idea. I don't know who this.
Sounds like. I guess from my point of view, I'm looking at it like, um, okay, so we have an idea of what, if we were in last year's. You could look at last year's and go, this is what we would have been able to do, to handle last year. So can we build? Well, cause I mean, when you're doing a budget on this, don't you need to know what that number is in order to do your piece?
More or less.
So she's, she's gonna do what the needs are and then match up with what we're able to to pay.
Yeah, I can't, I can't do, sorry, I just, I can't do anything until I have the, the, know what the ed specs are. Like, I can't, I can't, I can't.
Well, I I feel like we've been talking about the ed specs for quite some time now, and I I think like, that's the thing that's holding us back here. Um, and just, I mean, that's the piece that's kind of concerning to me is just making sure we get that all done. And that way we can kind of speed up this process.
Well, the, it, one of the reasons ed specs makes sense to do first is because the other piece of that puzzle that we don't know is what is our reimbursement rate? Um, so we need to know what the ed specs are, so we can see what type of a waiver we need to ask the, the, our legislators to try and secure for us. And also what type of a reimbursement rate they can get. Um, Windermere School, well, that was a little bit of a different circumstance, because I think we had a crumbling foundation issue associated with it, but, um, their reimbursement rate was seventy-seven percent. That that extra, uh, twelve percent or fifteen percent or whatever it is, is like thirty million dollars. That's a big, big difference.
But they took that because of the crump or?
I'm not sure.
Because.
I think it was a combination too, but so, so. I can't tell you what the number is until we know what the reimbursement rate is. We don't know the reimbursement rate until we get to the ed specs, so we know what our ask is gonna be.
So if the ed specs are in April, we're supposed to make a decision on do or renovate by. So if the Ed specs are in April, we're supposed to make a decision on do or renovate by.
So much we do have here, we'll get you a catch right there.
Yeah. All right, let me get, let me get through the next few and then we'll, we'll, we'll get to that, okay? Um, okay, so.
That was just slides, right?
Yeah, we're only on slide, what, eight, and I have twenty-four, so let's. So we'll try to get through, I'll try to move along here, so. Um, to, to your point, um, objective number three that, that we had noted was to determine renovation and expansion options. And basically that's looking at like what we just said. Do we renovate the existing high school or do we construct a new high school? Um, and that's what the architect, that's what G W W O is gonna help us decide. They're gonna look at the Ed specs. They al- they already have copies of them, even though they're in draft, so they're already taking a look at them. Um, so they're kind of a little bit ahead of the game, but they're gonna look at, okay. You know, based on the current high school site, maybe we can build a new high school while keeping the existing one active and then move everyone over there and that type of thing. They're gonna help us make those decisions and utilize their design and their expertise and costs and costs and what things currently cost now, um, to, to help make a decision for that. Broadbrook, on the other hand, is fairly easy because I think we already know that we're gonna do a renovation there, right? We're not gonna build a new Broadbrook, we're not gonna relocate somewhere else. So that one's pretty straightforward. It's the middle high school that we need some decisions on, so.
Very close to square footage to, to, I mean, one of the things that's putting us over there is space that R C takes up and C H C. Um, so I mean, that's something um, potentially to work with uh, legislators as well for space waivers. Um, for those types of programs as well, because we know the benefit that provides to the.
Did, did you get a, a determination as to whether F R C? Uh, F R C does not count towards the square footage used in the building, right?
Correct.
And, and it does need to be in the same building as the elementary school.
Correct.
That is true.
Okay. Yeah, perfect, uh, the grant funding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
So I think that could be used as leverage, I would imagine.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, that's, that's the point I was getting at.
Um, the other thing to note too is I know that permanent modulars were installed not that long ago. Because they are less than twenty years old, if we do any work to them, unless it's pre-approved by the state, that work's not gonna be considered reimbursable. So we just really need to look at if there's stuff that needs to be done there, how that's gonna be and what the scope of that will be and how we can kind of build that into the budget. So that's just something to keep in mind. Um, okay, so getting into what the architects are gonna actually do. So like I was saying before, they're gonna develop a conceptual design, one for Broadbrook, which again is somewhat straightforward, right? Um, and then look at a, a conceptual design for both the middle school, high school. Um, as a renovate to new versus new construction. Um, I've talked, I had a conversation with them today and one yesterday, and they're very comfortable. They feel that we can meet the schedule as it is. Um, like I said before, I think what's gonna drive that is just making decisions in the appropriate time. Um, they're also going to complete cost estimates for each design and that again will help determine, you know, renovate to new versus new. Um, work with us to get the grant application submitted. So there's a few things such as the cost estimate, for example. That their estimator's gonna give us a final estimate that has to get uploaded as part of the grant application. Um, in addition to things, there's, if it's a renovate to new project like Broadbrook would be. We have to submit a renovation status letter basically explaining why um, we're doing a renovation versus a new built. Um, and then they're also gonna provide rendering, so you'll be able to see kind of. Yeah, ideas, um. It's kind of like an advanced like A I, I guess I would describe it, where you can see like what the actual building could look like. What that interior exterior could look like, um. So it, it just helps uh, an understanding of what will actually be completed, um.
How detailed will that be? Would it be like you could take a virtual walkthrough?
Oh, no, 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 I can't, uh, I might have a picture of a rendering actually from another project, yeah. So this is one that I actually, um, that an architect just did on one of my other projects, so that's pretty much what, what you guys would get.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, but it's not gonna be like a detailed walkthrough, that's.
But something only show the size of the building that would include the space that we need.
Yeah, um, they'll show like a lot of exterior views and then they, they'll show some interior views. With these renderings, they do take a lot of time for them to generate, so it's hard for them to, you can't just say, hey, I need a rendering like today. Like it, it takes them a few days to actually generate because they're so detailed.
I think what we're most sensitive about. The, the division between the middle school and the high school.
Mm-hmm.
So if there's some renderings that would show us how they plan to do that and make the parents comfortable. Make all of us comfortable with, uh, you can't put my fifth grader in with a twelfth, uh, twelfth grader.
They've heard that a lot.
Yes.
Okay.
So in the renderings, there could be some definition of that that would help us be able to understand it.
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yeah. Yep, which.
Shows the division.
MS this way, HS this way.
What's, what's your sensor dividing them and, yeah.
No, they're protecting from each other.
Yeah, hey, would enter separate entrances.
Okay. Um, so does that give, does everyone kind of have a clear understanding of what's expected of them? Is there any more questions on? Um, comprehensive renovation plan, this is kind of what we're trying to all kind of get to is what we're actually gonna do, what money we need for it and what we're gonna ask for. Um, so this is gonna be just like a culmination of, um, between the Ed specs, the conceptual design, the cost estimate, and then getting to grant application. Um, what I will say, kind of just getting back to the schedule, is if we were to say, you know, extend everything out by a year, I just want everyone to be aware that the cost of materials and labor goes up every year. Ever since COVID, it's been kind of crazy. And the availability for things such as just a switchgear. I've been, I've been on projects right now where we order switchgear like almost a year, a year to a year and a half before we even start construction. Because that's how long they're taking to complete. So I'm not saying that to scare you, I just want everyone to kind of be realistic. Um, that if we do push, decide that, you know, we do need more time and you guys wanna push things out, there's gonna be a cost impact with that.
From the state perspective. Uh, well, I started, so I'm gonna ask now, I should ask you this privately. Um, from the state's perspective, do they care if we have a twenty-year note or a thirty-year note or a forty-year note?
I, I, I don't know. I don't think so.
They don't, they don't particularly care how we finance our end.
Yeah, unless it. They don't care how it gets financed.
I'm gonna have a conversation with Amy, but.
They don't really care how it gets financed unless it's getting financed through another state agency. They need.
Like where could we get, where else could we get?
These fall some, well, or like a grant or something like that. So if you get other source, funding sources like through the state, they just need to be aware of that. I haven't had a project where that's been a, a thing, so I don't know how that impacts everything. Um, so I, I don't know, but there is like a box that you check off on the grant application that says like, is your project receiving funding from any other, like a bonus program or a choice program or that type of thing. So, but again, like I don't know what those funding sources are. I don't have experience with them and I don't know how they impact your, your overall reimbursement through O G I.
That's a question where state reps, if you put anything in software.
So I'm gonna talk a little bit about the grant application, just so you guys have an understanding of what the grant application entails. So the grant application is done, it's all done online, um, through, it's called Core C T. Um, it's actually connected, it should be connected to the superintendent's uh, email. Um, and it's basically as the Board of Ed or the superintendent's account. The, there's two types of projects that the state will fund, priority and non-priority. Priority projects are considered what you guys are doing, renovate to new or new construction. Non-priority projects are considered, um, like a roof replacement, H bath, windows, that type of thing. Priority grants are all due on June thirtieth every single year, no matter what. Non-priority projects are due, well, let me back up a second. They're due on June thirtieth every single year unless you get special legislation stating otherwise. So we could get special legislation saying, okay, we're gonna submit a grant application in August if you wanted to. That's a conversation that we can have later on down the road, but we need to kind of work with the legislators on that. Um, non-priority projects, every first ten days, not business days, just ten days of the month, the application's open and then you could submit for them. So we're gonna be on the priority grant application side. Um, and it's uh, online form, um, and what we've done is we created this Word document and this is basically a list of all the questions. Um, and how you need to respond to each of them. So they get, you know, you select your priority project type, so like for instance, if it was Broadbrook, it would be a renovation. Um, and then we have to upload the resolutions and I'll go over that in a second. Um, and here's the question saying, is the applicant using federal funds to support their local share? So you have to answer that. Um, and basically what we do is we upload all the documents, we fill it all out and we submit it prior to June thirtieth. Um, so to, to complete this application, there's a few things that need to happen approval-wise through, through the town and through the, the school district. So one of them is there's resolutions that the Board of Selectmen need to authorize. Um, the first resolution is, um, basically allowing the Board of Education to apply for the grant. Um, the second one is establishment of a building committee. The third one is the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications. So what we do is we fill in all these, these highlighted areas depending on the project and, and the school name. I'll, I'll send them to probably Jason, they get on the agenda, they get approved. Um, and then those meeting minutes, the certified ones have to get uploaded.
That's for priority projects or that's for non-priority projects?
That's for priority projects.
Is the process different for non-priority projects?
Um, I don't think so, no.
Correct.
And I'll send a copy of this out to everybody so you have it. Um, the next thing that's important that needs to be authorized by the Board of Selectmen is the funding authorization. So that means that, um, they, you have to have meeting notes saying that the Board of Selectmen basically sends the project to referendum. And that the referendum is going to ask for X amount of money. Um.
They have to do that by June thirtieth.
No.
So, well, you have to send a project to referendum by June thirtieth.
That's not happening.
The Board of Selectmen have to approve that it goes to referendum.
Yeah. Not that the referendum happens by June thirtieth.
You just have to decide.
You're sending.
Saying that we're gonna go, we're gonna go to a referendum in September. It's not that we're having a referendum, it's different.
Yeah, but the Board of Selectmen at that point has to have had all the stuff in bed and has to be comfortable that they're gonna be committed to sending it to referendum in September.
Well, there's also working backwards issues with that, so we need to know the price.
Right.
We need to have a town meeting, which I have to notice a different way. We have to have a town meeting to authorize the, um, the Board of Education to submit the application. Um, and that's, that's something the, the state doesn't require, but our charter does.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I, I, did you send me this?
Yeah, I sent this.
This, this slide, the last, this slide and the one before, it'd be very important.
Yes, you should have it and I sent it earlier to you today.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just wanted, she said it wasn't final, so I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't one of the things that changed.
Yep. No, this was.
What's this slide? Uh?
It's only February fifth.
Hmm, yes, but we can't get the number, the price, until the Board of Ed does their thing.
Jay, there has to be an act, an actual number.
Yeah, yes. Okay. Um, other things that need to be part of the uh, grant application, and I think I mentioned this before. Um, the Board of Ed has to approve the Ed specs. Um, we need to submit the enrollment projections, which we already have, we already did that. Um, the space standards worksheet, so this is where that, the state checks to see if you're in alignment. Um, the cost estimate, which has to go into another state forum that we can help you fill out, um. That is basically like their, the way that they categorize their, um, their costs. Um, the site analysis, which there, there's a screenshot of the first page here that basically goes over like if a school's in a floodplain, the number of parking spaces. Um, and that gets filled out usually by the architect and their consultants, um, and that has to get signed off on by the superintendent. Um, the renovation status letter, if that's only for renovate to new projects. And then, once the referendum has occurred and passed, um, we just have to send the state the certified results saying that the referendum passed and we're good to go.
Thinking back to something you said at the very beginning of starting the slide, did you say that we could, through the legislature? Extend the date of that June thirtieth to some later date?
Mm-hmm.
What, what reasons would the legislature be able to?
So.
Us doing that?
As an example, so we are on a project in Sherman, which is a renovate to new school project. Um, they had a referendum, they tried to go to referendum like two years ago, it didn't pass. Because the town wanted them to go through like schematic design or something. Um, so they worked on the town, on the legislative side to say, okay, we're gonna have a really aggressive schedule. Um, we want the, the next time we go to referendum, we wanna get it passed. So they talked, worked with the state and they said, okay, well, you can submit a grant application by October first in lieu of June thirtieth. Based on all, all of the reasons that you gave them, they had a tight schedule, they tried a referendum, people are having you know, heartburn a little bit over the, the scam, the design and the process, so.
They had already failed once.
Mm-hmm. But that doesn't mean that if you guys don't work with your legislators that that's not possible. Um, but those are conversations that, you know, not to their own spot, but that like you would probably need to have with people. So that is, yes, it is also an option.
I think it's too late to.
Well, Sam, would it, would it help the timeline and, and I'm just playing catch-up here. Would it help the timeline if we really knew what we were doing with the high school versus new to renovate? And what our real decision would be is what we're looking for.
But we don't.
Uh?
But we don't. Yeah.
How do we make that? How do we get to that decision? Well, how does the board get to that decision?
It's whatever, it's honestly what they feel comfortable with doing or what they feel would be.
So.
What I.
What, what? Who do we get that information? Well, I guess it's, it's, what is the board figuring, what is the general consensus of the board? What do they want? It's I guess what I'm, I mean, more, more information. More information as far as regardless of if it's renovate or new or new, what do you guys want? Renovate or new?
I'd want new.
More, more information is only gonna do what? You know what I'm saying?
So yeah, so again, one of my questions would be for renovate to new, are you pulling down all the walls? Are you going right down to I-beams? Are we taking out the concrete? Are we doing electrical brand new one for the floor? Are we leaving everything that's old? Are we doing new plumbing?
What does it mean?
Is it just I-beams at that point? If we're doing I-beams at that point, why are we just starting?
But you're I, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, G W O is not gonna tell you that. They're gonna give you a concept of say, okay. This and that, I mean, they're not getting that deep. They're getting into basically, and correct me if I'm wrong. It's gonna cost eight million dollars to renovate, it's gonna cost eighty million dollars to put new, and I'm just.
Yeah.
Pretty nervous. That's what they're gonna do for us. They're not gonna tell us exactly what wall's coming down.
I'm saying exactly, but what I'm saying is, you have a foundation now with plumbing underneath coming up, electrical coming up, right? Everything coming up. There's a difference between eight million dollars and leaving it there and another forty-two if you're redoing everything.
But what I'm, I guess what I'm asking and the question was is you guys don't wanna make that decision until April.
We wanna make the decision once we know what the, what the architects think. Knowing that they have the conditions of the school, we don't know what those, we know that the conditions aren't great. But we don't know if that might cause them to say, you know what, this doesn't look so bad and you might be able to, and they'll roll that into the cost. They must have some measurement of adding or subtracting that stuff to the cost.
I have a question for Samantha. In your experience, when they do renovate as new, to go back to like Jeff's question. When they do renovate as new, what does that look like? What does that old existing building look like? Or are there different variations of that?
So, tell them how, how Jay, okay, you took walls. So tell them how, how JFK, you took walls.
JFK, yeah, we took full walls down. The floor got torn up. Um, so JFK Middle School was a complete renovation. And when I say renovation, I mean. They, one summer, they dug the middle of the hallway, the main hallway, right down to the ground. And re-trench and redid all of like the infrastructure that needed to be redone. Pour new concrete and then by the, the beginning of next school year, there was a floor and kids were walking on it, so.
The brick on the sides all stayed. Windows changed out, but the brick on the side.
Yes, but that's all dependent on the condition of things. Um, but again, to Joe's point, G W W O is gonna look at everything holistically. They're not gonna get down to the nitty gritty of everything. What's gonna happen is, once you get past the refer, random, and you get an architect on board for the remainder of the project. They're gonna get into the nitty gritty and say, okay, we can use windows one, two, three and eight, but we can't use the ones with. You know, fa- four, five, six and seven.
Like, but you're stuck within this budget.
Right. But that's why you build, but that's why you build contingencies into the budget. So like.
Just like, he said to the architect, whoa, we want new solar lights, we want new water lights, we want new electrical lights.
That's something that could be, yeah.
And what, and, and what I'm getting at is, if, if that's what you guys want and you're good with the structure we have. Then I think that's the direction we need to point in.
Because what will speed this process up is if they only have to do Broadbrook and one high school versus two. However, if that's not what you guys wanna do, that's, that's also your prerogative too.
Well, I think for me, thinking about it from a financial aspect, the question that Jason brought up makes sense. Because how long are we gonna be able to hopefully pay this off? So if we're gonna have forty years to pay it off, it might make more sense that you go with the new. But if we only are gonna have twenty years to pay it off, it would make more sense financially to go renovate.
My presumption is it's twenty years, but I'll find out from bond counsel if they allow us to stretch that. I know the standard term is twenty.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know if there's a G F O A rule.
That's just official to the whole community, but I'm realistic in understanding that.
Yeah.
We don't have a lot.
So to add, to add to this too, just when you're thinking about renovate to new versus new. Renovate to new means stripping down to, to the studs, right? These schools were built, I forgot the date, the fifties, the sixties. There's probably some hazardous materials in there and that's gonna add time and costs.
Yep.
And I'm not trying to persuade you one way or the other, I'm just.
But that's what I'm.
And that's what happened at JFK. There was hazardous materials, so every time they went to demo a new area, it had to be contained. Everything had to be taken out properly. Um, and that adds time and it adds money. Now, is it? JFK? Uh, I think it was built in the sixties. I don't know the exact date.
Um, did they go, did they cut it like to plumbing and electrical?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep. The bathroom, like plumbing, everything, like, yeah. Um, so a few of the things remained, but most of, um, the like guts, for lack of a better word. Pretty much all got replaced.
So in your experience with a renovate as new, how much percent wise do you tap into your contingency?
So there's, there's a few contingencies that go, that get built in throughout this process, so, um. When looking at like a referendum budget, you build in owner's contingency. We typically recommend. Five percent of the overall project budget for five percent of that to get added on. Um, and that will cover things like un, unforeseen. So like if we're knocking down a wall. And something happens and we need it, you know, the C M is gonna say, okay, well, I need a change order for ten grand. That's where that money comes out of. Once you get really into construction and into design, during design, they build in what they call a design contingency. Um, and that's utilized for, as you're going through the, um, schematic design, the design development and the construction document phase. As you're estimating that, the documents are developing along the way. So they start with this at schematic and they get to construction. And then eventually they get to like the bid documents, right? As you're developing those drawings, the D, so they build in what they call design contingency into the cost estimate saying, okay. We're saying, we're thinking that the project is gonna cost S, X amount of money. We're gonna build in, you know, three million dollars of design contingency to cover things that we may have missed or may not have been included. So that's another way, but that's more of like a, a cost coverage. It's not a contingency that you can pull out of. Um, the last contingency is construction contingency, which the construction manager utilizes. Um, so that's built into the construction manager's contract. And that's saying, okay, when you go, when you get a guaranteed maximum price, which is basically after you bid everything. And I'm sorry if I'm getting into the weeds, I'm just trying to. Um, once you bid all of your subcontractors out, this, the construction manager is gonna say, okay. I'm gonna guarantee you via this contract that I'm gonna build this school for no more than fifty million dollars. And if I go over that, there's, you know, brat, uh, consequences for that or whatever it is. Within that, they'll build in a contingency. Usually it's around, I wanna say it's like two to three percent. Of, I believe it's of their construction budget for unforeseen. And then once we get down the road of using change orders or needing to have change orders. Then we decide, okay, is this because the C M, you know, did something that's gonna come out of construction? Or, you know, did Pat, did a principal say, oh, we need an extra room here? Okay, that's gonna come out of owner contingency. So there's definitely safeguards built in, um, along the way and that's. And JFK honestly is a great example of that. We use, JFK is unique in the sense that it got bid right as COVID was beginning. So a lot of the subcontractors were a little bit nervous when they came to bid, and this was prior to me even being involved, but, um. So the bids came in a little bit lower than they typically would because everyone was a little bit nervous. At the beginning of COVID, no one knew what was gonna happen. So that was a little bit of an anomaly, but we use owner and construction contingency throughout JFK.
Where did it land overall with budget as to what was?
Um, we were under budget overall. And I'll just give an example. I was on site at JFK one day. They were digging to pour a foundation for something and they hit an oil tank that no one knew was there. It was an abandoned oil tank. So it's like, okay, well, now what do we do?
Yeah.
So I had to get someone to come test the soil, you know, make sure that it was capped off properly, all these things. And those are, i- it happens. You can't, you can't predict everything. So that's always something to keep in mind when it comes to renovate to new.
Even renovate to new, is there a certain percentage? I mean, looking at the top of the school, if anybody's taking a look, it just seems odd and how you need to separate it. Is there a percentage? A minimum percentage you'd have to keep and still the rest new if you wanted to renovate to new? Do they have an actual?
No.
So we could just stay, keep the auditorium and crash everything else down and then build ground back.
You don't even, but you could keep the auditorium, do you?
Well, then it wouldn't be renovate to new anymore if you knock everything down.
But if you have the outside shell.
Yeah.
Besides you have the shell.
I think the whole building.
Mm-hmm.
But if you look at the shell of the whole building, it's weird.
You can add, you can do, you can add on to it. So like JFK, for example, they added on a whole auditorium section. That wasn't originally there.
Yeah.
So, so maybe for our next meeting, can you bring that information to us about, that way we can maybe make a decision as a group? And.
Information on.
On like what the percent is of the building that need to keep in order to maintain the renovate as new. And then maybe that would help suffice a lot of our concerns.
Yeah, I can ask, um, when I'm back in the office tomorrow, because it may be something that, um, Jim knows. Cause I.
Keep like the whole center of the school and go back out for something that makes more sense and then we don't have as much. To have to worry about.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I did ask him a question in the past. He told me it was, uh. Uh, he gave me a response, like, like you can't just keep a wall, he said. And say it's renovate to new, but as far as what portion out, that it was.
Yeah. You can't, yeah, you can't just keep like a pipe in the middle and be like, guys, we're renovating to new, like we're. Like that's not, yeah, you can't do that.
My question to you Samantha is, um. To your knowledge, have, uh, like through, um. Waivers, uh, or new construction, have they gotten, um, higher percents based on like age of building? And anticipated hazardous materials and it being, uh, more beneficial to, uh, build to do as far as like reimbursement rates?
No, so when you do a renovate to new, you have to prove that a renovate to new was lower cost than new construction. So that's where the estimates come in and that's why I need to submit a renovation status letter, but they don't give you any sort of special benefits. Due to like age of building or hazardous materials.
If, uh, if the plans came back from architects that it was, uh, less to build to new. Then we would get the higher reimbursement rate or no, I'm following that incorrect.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think that's necessarily how they see it, but I can double check on that too.
Certainly, I guess, cause if you follow that and find out if, you know, there's some research out that you could find out who got higher rates and maybe why.
Well, it's all, um, I'm, it's all, it's all based on legislators. And if you go online and you search, and I'm not trying to say that I can't do it for you, but I'm just saying, if you go online and search like Connecticut. Um, State of Connecticut School Construction Priority List.
Oh.
That'll, it'll come up with the priority list and it'll list all the projects that are on the priority list. It should have them for every year. Um, and it'll list all of them and it'll, I think it also lists the special legislation associated with them. Um, and then there's also a form online too that you can look up that has the reimbursement rate for every single town from now. Through like the past, I think like ten to twelve years. Um, and it shows like the reimbursement rate from like renovate to new versus new construction.
Good.
Yeah, and those get updated, I think, every year depending on like your tax, your, the town's taxes. So. Um. Any other questions on that? Um, so, uh, another thing that I know we've been talking about is the communications plan and community engagement. So actually before this meeting, I got the final draft of the newsletter, so I'll get that sent out to everybody. Um, so hopefully we can get that newsletter out sooner, um, hopefully by this week. Um, and then my other, my next kind of steps for that was to, um, prep another newsletter. In a few months, like kind of towards the end of May, beginning of June, cause by then we'll have a really good plan as to where we're headed, right? Um, and then, uh, community forums, we found that these to be super important and helpful when it comes to. Making sure that everyone feels as if they were included. Now, we're not gonna obviously directly ask the community what we should do, but it's more of an information session so they can understand where we are. And they can ask questions if they have any or comment on things if they feel the need to. So I kinda built those into the schedule. I built, I did one in March, one in June and then one in August. But again, depending on what everyone feels comfortable with, we can shift those dates around. Um, the other things that I wanted to talk to you guys about when it comes to kinda marketing and communications is. I wasn't sure if you guys were interested. Some projects do like a Facebook page or an Instagram page. Um, so those are always options if you guys have people who manage those and are, um, willing to do that. Um, sometimes like for JFK, for example, they had a JFK building project Facebook page and they would like up. Upload updates and things like that. Um, the other thing, and I think we, I've talked about it before, is the political action committee. So that's a committee that can kind of act, um, kind of in favor and su- or in support of a referendum. Um, even during a blackout period prior to the referendum. Um, and then I know we talked about last time too involvement of P T O. I think that could be a useful way to kind of. Gauge interest and get people excited and want to learn more about the project, cause those are really the people that it directly impacts. Um, so, uh.
The flyer, is that mailing? Or how are you?
Everything's getting mailed out.
Right.
Um, that, so the, and I can actually show you. So.
And then who supplies the addresses to you?
Um, so the, our consultant, Tall Timbers, has a permit to kind of send everything out, so he handles all the addressing and all that stuff. Um, and then we were having conversations about the return mailing, so what we're gonna. What I think we've decided on is like if people wanna hand fill out the survey and send it back, it'll be on them to kind of just fold it, put a stamp on it and send it back. Um, cause that's just the easiest way to do it. Um, so basically, uh, as, and I'm not a graphic designer, so I think it'll fold like in this way. So this'll be like the front page, this'll be the back. Um.
That'll be the set.
Yep, yep, exactly. And then it has, you know, the Q and A, it has some photos and then it has the survey on here. Um, and then the survey is linked to a Q R code. So if people wanna just scan it with their phone, it makes it super easy. Um, but we understand that not everyone wants to do that.
Is there a way, do we care if more than, if the person takes a survey more than once?
So, um, the way that we have it noted is if people wanna do it as a family, they can, or you could do it individually. Um, I believe if they do it individually, like for the Q R code, you would probably just have to use two separate phones.
Okay.
And when is this going out?
Um, hopefully by the end of the week.
So that won't be February tenth that it has to be returned, correct?
Yeah, no, well.
Okay, I was gonna say.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Be supposed to prove that or is it just giving it to us still?
Um.
I'm fine if other people have gone through it.
So like I've reviewed it, Jason's reviewed it, I think Joe's reviewed it, Patrick's reviewed it, I Denise has had it. So as long, if you guys want me to like form, prove it, you can. I can send a copy out later. Okay.
C S U is primarily responsible for the Q and A survey questions.
I'm fine with that. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. Definitely. So. Oh, I, you were smiling. Oh. Um, okay, so this is, uh, the schedule that I kind of built out, um. And I, I tried to categorize it by color and by, you know. Basically, the top will be committee and board meetings, so those are all the ad hoc facilities committee meetings. Which would be the first Wednesday of every month, so those are all scheduled out. I included the building committee meetings, cause I wasn't sure, um, I know we want to keep them informed. Um, so I just wanted to keep those as a reminder for everybody. Board of Ed meetings I included on here as well, um, and as, or the main Board of Ed meetings where we would need approvals from, from them. Um, and then Board of Selectmen meetings I also built out on here. Um, communications planning, uh, the first newsletter, obviously I put by two fourteen, but it should be by the end of this week.
So that's where that aqua colored.
Yep.
First block is?
Yep.
Yeah.
This one. Um, and then this would be preparing the second newsletter, um, between April, so it goes out by, uh, beginning or mid-May. Um, I'd built in the community forum dates, like I said before, March, June and then August. And then this is kind of where we get into the, um, educational specification planning and, and the meat of the schedule. So the anticipation is to have all of the programming and ed specs done by the end of March, like we said. Q A and M is gonna get us their report by the end of February. And as we're going through the ed spec process, we'll have, uh, G W W O start beginning the concept designs and looking at those. Um, working on the cost estimating and getting the grant application ready like concurrently. Because we can kind of do all, all of this stuff somewhat at the same time. Um, it's just a lot of moving pieces and that's typically how all of these things go. Um, I've had owners where they send me all of the minutes, like literally the day of that grant application being due. So it, I don't, I don't like doing it that way, but it happens. Um, so obviously the goal is to get the grant application submitted by June thirtieth.
That brown block, that last brown block is June thirtieth?
This one down here, yep.
Okay.
Yep. And then we, I just need to confirm with you guys what your blackout period is, because that'll indicate kind of what the communications can be. Um, some, sometimes it's two weeks, sometimes it's four, so I, I just need to know, because once. Depending on the blackout period, no one from this committee can really comment on the referendum. And the website basically has to be factual only. It can't have anything kind of pushing towards the referendum. Um.
Where is that? I mean, what decides that? Jason, do you know?
State. No, I'm, I'm on C's website now. There is, it's in the statute, um, as to.
Size of town or something?
It's not, it, I don't believe it is town by town as to when the project becomes a question. Um, and that's, I think what, what Sam is alluding to with the difference between town to town is that that has been interpreted differently. Um, so is it a question when the Board of Selectmen votes to send it to referendum sometime before June thirtieth? Is it a question when the recessed town meeting has happened? Is it a question when the public notice runs in the news beat? Um, I think different towns have interpreted that differently, um, but that, that's an elections enforcement concern.
I don't know, those guys are pretty clueless.
Um. Okay, so I know I kind of ran through a lot of information with everybody.
But we're gonna get a copy of all this.
Yes, I will send a copy of all this to you. And I also included on here as well. Um, oh, I did include the newsletter as part of this, so I included screenshots of the newsletter for you guys. As well as screenshots of the grant application checklist, so you can read through it. If you're bored and would like to read through it, it's very exciting, you know? So, um, that was my presentation. I know it was a lot.
Sorry, it took you so long.
No, it's fine. No, that's what I'm here for. So, um, does anyone have any other questions for me? And I will send. And I will send a copy of this out to all of you.
This answer a lot of questions that go on that.
It did, for sure. Good. Um, and I'm hoping for the next meeting, um, I could potentially get GWWO here and they, and they can kind of do a little bit of a presentation on either the next meeting or the meeting after, depending on where we are, uh, as to like their stat, their experience, where they are, you know, what they would recommend. Um, they said that they would be more than willing to do that.
That's awesome.
I just need to get, um, their contract executed and then they'll be good to go.
Next meeting will be a month from today, so it'll be, uh, Wednesday, uh, March fifth by thirty.
Yep.
And I, I would think earlier March rather than April.
Yeah.
If we can.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
So will we, between now and our next meeting, see the ed specs?
Yes, let me see how the, our meeting goes tomorrow. Um, like Patrick just sent me his comments, so we need to have a follow-up to kind of go over those comments.
The middle school, high school, as though, uh, which ones?
Tomorrow, we're going over middle school, high school.
Yeah.
Um, Broadbrook, you just sent me your comments, so we need to go through those as well. I don't want to put it. What?
Those, yeah, I had those last week, the middle school, high school one is close.
Yeah, and, and till we agree on the space, yeah, uh, it's somewhat close. Um, I'll work on throughout the month getting you guys those. Like I said, I just don't want to send you a draft that's not fully baked.
Well, like, when you say we, we, until we agree on the space, is that a thing that you feel is between you and Patrick? Or is that everybody here? Because I thought that's.
I think that's a bigger conversation than just me, too, but I think it starts with the school.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the architects to have understanding of the space and the needs. My, I mean, my, my understanding is, um, the architects could potentially have some creative designs to address. Obviously, not all the space, based on what you're saying, but some of, uh, uh, space needs.
I was gonna say, in some of these things, it feels like we're just a, a group of yes men.
Ultimately, you are the deciding factor, you're board.
Right.
The board of it, so let us narrow it down and give you those scenarios, and that's what we're trying to do.
Down or, or have, yeah.
We would get.
Wanted to bring this up, too. What if we were to be? We're only doing this once a month.
We didn't have an extra meeting.
Well, if we had an extra meeting in between where we didn't have CSG, we kind of bring up the stuff, we're talking about what we're looking for, stuff, going over some of the stuff they presented us as a group and then kind of present. So like when Joe said, what are you looking forward to make a decision? Well, I'm kind of like this, this and this. Everybody's gonna have their own opinion on what they're thinking, you know, and if you kind of go through that stuff, we can kind of enter that information and then back to us. I don't know if anybody would be, does that make sense? Or?
What if, what if the, the group gets any comments or questions that they have to us? And then maybe we can get some information and if it's an in-between meeting that we have to talk about. Okay, so Jeff, you had a question about blanky-blank. She said this, how do we feel about that? How do we, the group, feel about that?
That's what we can't make decisions. Just to gather the questions via email.
But just keep in mind that that, we can't make decisions via email with everybody involved, because that constitutes a quorum.
Yeah, that's not what I'm saying. Saying if you get the questions and we forward them to Sam, and you could send them to Patrick or to me or whatever you decide. And, and in the interim, if there's like small questions that we can get answered and we would, it would be productive for us to meet a second, a second Wednesday or something. But without the experts in the room and just say, okay, how do we feel about the space on the blankety-blank that they're saying we might be able to do this instead of that?
Feel like you'd be just a little bit more or less rushed.
We've only got three meetings between now and when she needs to get all this stuff together, not including June, because I'm figuring there's probably gonna be a lag on that. So as far as your chart goes, I know we're gonna all see it, but how often do you have us as a group meeting? Is it just the three or four times between now and June?
Yeah, well, yeah, because that's what your schedule is. So like, I can, like, I don't mind meeting with whoever I need to meet with, but again, if I meet with all of you, then it constitutes a quorum, so. And then if you don't have a sched, like a pre-plan.
CSG's, um, input, so, um, um, I, one of the things Jim said was that, um, certainly they have been. Um, I'm only meeting whenever.
No.
I think people know that. Like I'll, I'll always show up. What they had stated the last time we met is uh, that two-week increments were not enough to turn around. And so that was the input, um, but what they also stated was that they can always meet as needed. So I think if the group feels like you need a, a meeting in two weeks, then we should schedule it. If you think like based on the tasks and the timeline that Samantha shared and that a month from now is, uh, good, or there's an internal, like, I mean, this group can decide, decide that, but just to give some context as far as how that original meeting schedule was developed, that was based on CSG's input and the amount of times to turn around work.
And the thought is if you have, I mean, there are some takeaways from today's meeting. And if we get that stuff and then meet, it's before we meet with you again, you keep plowing ahead on what you've got going. But then we talk about things that, you know, if maybe we feel there might be a little bit of a redirect somewhere, then if we get together and we, you know, come up with that, or we say, no, everything's golden, see you in a month. Or, you know, see you in two weeks or whatever. But it just feels like if we're meeting only three times in the, before that's happening, then why am I here?
Yeah, and that's, and that's totally up to you guys. Like, like Patrick said, we've had building committee meetings that meet every week or every two weeks. And for us, it's just not, it's not enough time for us to get you guys anything. Then I'm only focused on getting to the next meeting. I'm not focused on the overall. So if you guys feel like you need to meet more than once a month, that, by all means, and if you don't want me here, I don't have to be here, I can be here, that's totally up to you guys. Um, but that's just what we've experienced and that's what we recommend. If you guys feel differently, that's, again, that's, that's up to you.
Did every two weeks. Their schedule monthly. We, throughout the questions, they go there, questions are answered, we can meet together and see these requirements.
And as, as long as I'm aware of, like, if you guys are having a meeting and there's something that you need from me and you give me a little bit of time, I can always send you guys stuff. If you don't feel like you, you want me here and you want to have discussions, you're safe.
I don't care if you're here.
Yeah, we don't want to waste your time if it's.
But yeah, you've got other things to do.
Listen.
Gather, we need to gather.
Yeah. If you guys need me here, I'm, that's, it's my job, so I'm, I'm.
But like you said, I don't want to pull you away from what you're doing. To.
Be with us.
Yeah, but if you've got stuff. But if you, you know, all of this information that you have, I'd like to go through that, like I'm at Denise, I'd like to check out all those little blocks and boxes and read everything that it says, and think about what does it mean and.
Yeah.
So.
And if you have questions as you're doing that, if you want to email Denise, um, or Patrick or Jason or whoever.
At least both of us, Jay, do you want them as well?
So that all three of us have them. Then if we, if we, if the three of us say, wait a minute, this is kind of a lot of questions. We should have a meeting, whether it's of, or we should ask this question onto Sam. She'll have it for the next meeting, or, I mean, we can sort of, the three of us talk about it and say, we probably shouldn't have a second meeting. What do you think about that?
I'm thinking we should probably have a meeting.
So Jason, yourself, Joe, Patrick, getting a bunch of information sent to them, and is there stuff that we're not getting that you guys?
Uh, ed specs, the drafts and stuff.
Just drafts.
Uh, so, um, nothing finalized, so I haven't seen any finalized history for it. I have not seen any, um, facilities or not for a while. I mean, we looked at that a long time ago, so.
Yeah, it's still, then, we're still waiting for two A and M, finish that.
Yeah.
They need a few more answers on, um, so, um, uh, but nothing as far as, um, like I, I don't have any finalized report.
Okay.
And no decisions are being made.
I mean, I think the more information, too, that we all have is gonna help, like, with the four of us being on the board being experts so that when it's time for us to be in front of the whole board, we can really.
Answer questions.
Yes.
And do due diligence before.
Yeah, because I, I'd rather not feel like, what's the point of this board if stuff is happening, then we just sit back and let the wind blow through my hair.
This is way too important for that.
I hear you, but that's one of the reasons why I like to have a little bit more, feel like more involvement here.
Okay, so a couple of weeks, meet again?
So the date, sign now?
Like our budget.
Because we're opposite, I mean, if we have other stuff.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we said as needed for that, so.
So two weeks from tonight is the nineteenth, and that's when Patrick and I have to present our budgets at the public hearing.
So you want to do the eighteenth?
I cannot do Tuesdays.
What time do you leave for seven?
Six, Board of Finance's meeting at seven.
Oh, it's at six. I said I was showing up at seven.
I'm long-winded, so I'll go first.
I have to be ten minutes or less.
Oh, is that a selectman's night?
Uh, yep, but we can, um, it's also a Board of Selectmen budget workshop.
Can everybody meet?
Can I make a suggestion to you? What other committees have done is, I know you guys all probably have your own jobs, but like, some committees meet at noon. I don't know if that'll work. I'm just throwing it out there.
I can make it.
I'm just throwing that out there, because that sometimes opens up some more.
I could not. All right.
All right, so when's our actual next meeting?
Could be a Friday. Suggestion, review all the information you got from Sam. File your questions, and if it warrants a meeting, then try to figure that out, or. Get Sam to answer them, and once she answers them, if it warrants a meeting. Look, how's that?
I think it kind of warrants a meeting, so we can all talk about it.
Once you compile and get the answers.
I mean, there's now a whole lot of towns that shows up to the public. Do you just meet at seven? And, I know it's a later night, you just commit and say, well, I, you know, meet for an hour and, you know, have a hard stop at eight.
Yeah, that, that's fine, as long as, uh, that room is available, because the Board of Finance will be in here, or, you know, or we can move across the street.
And we don't need them, no. Well, they zoom in there anyway.
Yes.
Uh, that gets me out of a, me, I just swap out a meeting, too, so it seems better.
Actually, if we're gonna, uh, that's, that's, I like the idea of doing it the nineteenth after the, um, budget presentation, but if we're gonna do that, could we use that? That one's gonna be too small for all of us.
That'll be perfectly fine.
Okay, so the nineteenth, is the nineteenth, there's a reference school. Seven o'clock.
Yep.
So the budget proposal, that's, you said it sets at six?
Yeah. I come in at a cool forty, forty-five minutes. I, um, this year, I'm going into the history of money.
Can we set a meeting, let's say seven o'clock or after the public hearing? Isn't there something that we can do like?
You need to call a date, a, a time certain, and then you can, uh, convene it and recess it until whenever.
We've done board event meetings like that, so we can post it that way. Yeah, but immediately after, we, we can post it that way.
If it's gonna be ten minutes, we'll have no problem about getting out by seven. I, I'm, you know, I, I'll squeeze it in.
So what day did you guys decide?
And it'll be across the street at Bradford School.
Sounds like it'd be closer to seven fifteen.
See, now who's going long-winded?
Explain what the debt service means.
Let me tell you the total history of debts. All started with the days. It's probably true.
Oh, we have the discussion of vacant position. The ad hoc committee did, uh, make feedback.
Hey, Justin, sorry, um, I know as of yesterday morning, we, uh, we haven't received any emails since then, and we've received. Okay, thank you.
And we ask people to, if they had any suggestions, did anybody have any suggestions?
I gave, I gave you three. Tell them to.
Well, what do I?
Mike Yost. The only one I can remember right now. I gave you three.
Was Randy Clifton one of yours or what?
Yes, yep.
And who else?
Uh, it doesn't, you, you don't get to choose when you're wearing the hat, when you're not. She's here as the Board of Ed. If, but she's still, the, the point being, if, if Alan Baker were to be the civilian appointee, that still triggers our quorum, quorum concerns, even though he's here as a citizen, because he's vested with a seat. You, you, you can't choose when you're, when you are and when you're not. I, I don't think that matters if it was three Board of Finance people, it's same thing, as long as you trigger that quorum consideration, then you hit the all those notice requirements.
Trying to understand it.
Yeah, but nine, it's a nine-member board, so five's quorum. I don't know how many you have, is something what you have? Okay, there, there's your answer, but you, you, the point being is you can't choose when you, when you are with which board or not. If you are, you are. It's binary.
Well, I just think, at least with like Mike, I think that also ticks off somebody's.
Mike's in the field, isn't he? He does some sort of large project.
I thought Carol Muska was a good. Don't have a teacher on here. Might have some, um, insight into classroom sizes and that kind of stuff that we as not being teachers.
Well, I mean, that's up to the body.
Deputy registrar, I had not even thought of her until courtney. But, uh, once I did think of her, she, um, she, I had sent her to the senior center to represent, you know, for voting kind of stuff, so she's an effective speaker and stuff. But, um, all those names, uh, Randy Clifton is a good guy, um.
I'll throw another one out, Sal Raymond.
Oh, yeah.
So is there a process in which we would select these people? Would they be filling out an application and giving us a reason why they would want to serve on here?
That's up to us.
I, I.
I can do a little, um, I can do something where I just reach out to them and say, you know, you're known as the lunchie, are you interested? And, um, I can do something where I just reach out to them and say, you know, your name is the luncheon, are you interested? And, um, what would you bring to the committee? You know, have a brief conversation with each of them if you want.
I get, I don't know.
Kind of want to see something. It's because, not that I don't believe your word, but I would like to see, you know, their qualifications and why they want to serve, so we have a full understanding.
They could fill out a form, a board of commission form. What about that?
Yeah.
And do we have their email addresses? Going to try to think of like, move this along.
Right, makes process like a worse reading.
I don't have.
Uh, we, we do. Joe, do you have, do you have Mike Tillian's email address?
I'll reach him. What if I reach out to him tomorrow with blanks that I don't have?
Okay.
And, and maybe send a little note on it, it says student has been mentioned about the hot, so I think maybe you would be interested. Please fill out the application.
If we can get all their email addresses, just B C C in the same email with the attachment, and then say, email it back to us and let us know.
Yeah.
What?
Yeah, I think.
Mike Yost, you have?
I don't have his, no. I don't even think I have a phone number for him.
Who knows him?
I do. Uh, yeah, but I don't know if that is fun. Uh, I probably have his Facebook contact.
Message him for email address?
Yes. I could do it out of town email though, because his moniker is a little dicey.
Wayne Cherry, Wayne Cherry, you have?
Yeah, Wayne's got an email.
Oh, I think he was just in the hallway.
Okay, cool. Good ideas. Okay.
So just, um, just for the, I know from the agenda, we'll, um, we'll add that back.
Yeah.
Yeah, discussion again.
Discussion possible. Miscellaneous.
I think we can have miscellaneous all the way through, but anybody have miscellaneous?
Anything? And finally, this very tired, sad public that's been waiting all this time.
Um, first of all, Norrie Palmer, two forty seconds. Interesting conversation, and I think what I gathered from it from being here is that this ed spec situation has to be dealt with and has to be dealt with promptly. And who's that? As, because I honestly don't know if Board of Education, remember, what my thoughts are going to be when that gets presented in front of me. I can only take that and balance it out with all of the floors I went on, all of that stuff. Second thing, um, I'm a big proponent of school new renovation, whatever it is, I think that in the back of all of this has to be some thought about our body in the past, we need our debt service capacity, not from the perspective of only school. We have a broad aspire department that wants to build a new facility, we have the police department who is just hiring architects to look at theirs. There's a whole lot of other needs in this time, and that will weigh on the voters, now that they're trying to make it sufficient about funding X amount of dollars over X amount of time, and I think it's really important to keep that in mind. We, we just went through a early debt evaluation, there were many people that hung up high high, um, and while I'm all for focusing on the school, I think everyone, this was before this phase, and finally, everybody's got to realize thought line when it comes down to this tax pay, and how much they're willing to put up
for just.
For the school, but we need to bear in mind we have a whole lot of other needs, um. And then one thing that might come up for this is that the conversation about debt service. Part of our issue is directly linked to the fact that we do not spend enough money on our operational costs, we just don't go and now it's come back to bite us.
Yeah.
I mean, not that hard, but it has caused a problem, um. But I just want you to bear in mind all the other things that everybody wants and found and needs, everybody has um, to keep some capacity in case of emergencies and things like that, so.
So it's not all about us?
Unfortunately.
Yeah, that's, so, yeah, that's the important, it's the sixteen church three things and that, so just want to echo what, um, Norrie, um, is saying, it's all the specs. That is, to me, when I'm listening, I appreciate the conversation and these, and getting all the, you know, information and all the all the work that you have done, and Sam, your presentation, you know, was really helpful. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, again, reiterate what Norrie said about the specs, and I just have three other questions. One, I'm hoping, uh, Denise, can you send us, you know, other board members that show up PowerPoint, it's an excellent PowerPoint, thank you.
Um, that's the way I can do is, you have, um, the board of ed app that's coming out.
Oh, perfect.
Um, I can put in correspondence.
Fabulous, fabulous. My second question is, um, I love your experience forum, it's great, I saw that you had March, I think June. And will you be, who will organize that community forum and who presents?
So it would be scheduled by this committee. It'll be like a, you can either do it in lieu of a, of a meeting, or you could do it in addition to, it'll be like a special meeting in that case. Um, and then typically, like, you guys would kind of kick everything off, and then most likely would either be myself or the architects who would present. Um, and then you guys can help field questions and things like that.
And then one last thing is the newsletter. Question, this is my survey newsletter is going.
Yes.
So the newsletter, nothing is going on in Spanish. Suggests that we do have a lot of Spanish reading.
Okay, um, no, we didn't talk about that at all.
No, I understand the survey is ready to go.
Mm hmm.
And some, some of the newsletters and the update. Um, I wouldn't really hope that it would be possible that families are getting newsletter.
Okay, no, that's, that's good to know, thank you.
That's it.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate to, uh, uh, the board, uh, members, uh, that certainly like on behalf of like myself and leadership team are making this a priority. So I know that specs has come up quite a bit. I can tell you anytime we get something, we do an immediate turnaround. I know the initial meetings took place with middle school, high school in September twenty-fourth and twenty-sixth. So anything that's, uh, come up, we're making sure that we're getting a quick turnaround and getting that feedback. We got C S G, I know when the architects wanted to, uh, uh, visit, um, you know, we were given twenty-four hours notice, we dropped what we had, and we will continue to do this because it's a priority. Um, so certainly I, I sense urgency from our board event, I'm sure the other, uh, board and, uh, uh, community members, but I wanted to make it known, like, this is a priority. You know, we will make the time, we have continued to make the time and make sure that, you know, we're giving quality feedback, we're also turning around, uh, quickly on our.
How many people are working on the ed specs with you guys? Like, in your work, how many people were on that?
From C S G?
Yeah.
Um, so we have, uh, her name's Randy Fiori, um, she's, uh, but she basically writes the whole ed spec documents. She was a former educator, so she's super familiar in space. Um, and then it's basically me and Jim kind of just rev- reviewing it and kind of facilitating everything.
And based on the feedback, you're asking, you guys are meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
In elementary or?
That's middle school.
Middle high school.
And then there's just a couple of things to talk about on that regarding size.
Mm hmm.
And you guys can narrow that down.
Yeah, I mean, it's been expressed that the size is the biggest, uh, but yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So I don't want to minimize.
No. Yeah, so that's what our plan is for tomorrow. Like I said, I just got Patrick's comments back, so we'll have another meeting on those for the elementary school. So we'll, we'll keep pushing forward. It's just, it's a very large, like, comprehensive document, and it gets really granular, so it's just important that we make sure we we, we hit everything.
He has a comment.